...being the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, July 15, 2014 at 10:00 AM. Please stand for a moment in silence, please. Please turn toward the side for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have, I'd like to consider a motion to amend the agenda to add a certificate of recognition to Major General Jeffrey A. Rockwell as Deputy Judge Advocate General of the Air Force.
Can I make a motion for the purpose of the announcement?
Just second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there any public comment on the agenda items? I've seen none. Go on to the, well, let's go ahead and do the the certificate of recognition. This is a certificate honoring your position and appointment as Major General Jeffrey A. Rockwell, Deputy Judge Advocate of the Air Force. The Fayette County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize and congratulate Mr. or Major General Jeffrey A. Rockwell on the 14th day of July 2014. From my understanding, Mr. Rockwell, General Rockwell is the, only the second general to receive, you know, status as general in Fayette County. So we
The only other was General Patton, I mean General Marshall.
General Marshall, yes. So that's, he's in very good company, obviously. We appreciate his service.
Rose Durbin's son is a general. Rose Durbin's son is a general. She's, he's with the cavalry, with the army, I believe, yes.
Under item four, under the assessment office, consider approval of the following for a real estate tax exemption as he has been qualified as a 100% disabled veteran by the Veterans Administration of Pennsylvania effective for 2014 tax year, Ewing F. Fields, 721 Morgantown Road, Uniontown, parcel 34-28-0045.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Consider entering into an agreement with Resource Technologies Corporation State College PA to update the GIS mapping layer at a cost of $5,000.
There was a, yeah, we've got a request to table.
On that, we received a request from Bill Lukach to table that. I've read you the whole email. It says, "Please table the GIS agenda item I presented at this morning's meeting." He sent me this email, and I believe he sent copies to you, right after the agenda meeting. "I requested a written proposal from RTC for you to review. I received a reply stating they could not guarantee the accuracy of the update to the degree I wanted for the $5,000. The scope of work I would like would run around $20,000. We can do the work in-house, however, it's very time-consuming, but we are going to tackle the job." And that is from Mr. Lukach.
I'll rescind my motion, motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under behavioral health, consider approval of agreements and modifications as listed.
I'm making a motion to approve the agreements or modifications as listed on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item six, Bridge Department, consider approval of the purchase of a T-Rex compact track loader with manual quick attachment and other equipment attachments, including PA State Contract Number The total cost of the purchase is $61,284.20, best line equipment, 140, Paul Baker Industrial Drive State College is an approved Co-Stars vendor.
Second.
Those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of the purchase of a 2014 Ford F-150 extended cab truck through the PA State Contract Co-Stars Program to replace an aging vehicle. The cost of the purchase is $25,557.68. Davies Ford Route 119, Connaughtsville is the approved Co-Stars vendor.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item number seven, Children and Youth Services, consider ratifying the fiscal year 2013/14 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services, Fayette County Juvenile Probation, and the County of Westmoreland for the provision of secured detention services to delinquent and alleged delinquent youth on an as-needed basis. Rate for the services $190 per day, $300 for initial load.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2014/15 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Abanko International Incorporated of Fairfax, Virginia for child accounting and profile system application service agreements related to support services.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2014/15 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Abanko International of Fairfax, Virginia for business agreement for consulting and ad hoc IT services rates as follows.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of fiscal year 2014/15 purchase service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services, Fayette County Juvenile Probation, and County of Westmoreland for the provisions of secured detention services to delinquent and alleged delinquent youth as, on an as-needed basis, rate of $900, or $190 per day and $300 for initial load.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of a fiscal year 2014/15 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Ewing the Newcomer Esquire, Uniontown, for agency representation. The rate of service is $110 per hour.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of a fiscal year 2014/15 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Anthony Ian Morelli, Esquire, Uniontown PA. Mr. Ian Morelli was court-appointed to represent children in dependency procedures. The rate for his services is $1,000 per month.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Consider approval of the appointment of a county resident, Dr. Joanne Jankowski, to a three-year term on the Fayette County Children and Youth Service Advisory Committee. Term shall expire on June 30, 2017. The advisory committee voted unanimously at the June monthly meeting to recommend her appointment to, to the Commissioners at the July meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item number eight, Controller, Financial Condition of the County.
I forgot Dr. Lusick's at first, I apologize.
Morning.
Good morning. Okay, for the general fund as of today, the checking account is $10,713,533.81. Funds owed to the general, to the general fund are temporary loans to victim witness of $30,000, Children and Youth Fund of $1 million, the bond fund of $1,964,246.41. Due to the general fund, the fare insurance policy of $9,796. Our payments that are due from previous years for inmate punishment is $40,651.26. Offender supervision for previous years, $87,758.28. Victim witness, $4,271.61. Records improvement, $2,325.32. And Freddie Town Ferry, $5,054.4. Central service payments that are due from the C-17 fund for previous years is $9,005. Offender supervision for previous years is $39,369. Inmate punishment for the past three years is $19,532. And victim witness fund is $10,780. The general fund owes $6,300,000 on the tax anticipation note. So our net position is $7,616,322.73. The total revenues so far for 2014 are $21,445,389.29. Total expenditure so far is $14,216,660.27. And 2013 expenditures paid in 2014 are $1,120,484.47. The capital reserve fund has a balance of $234,545.75. And the bond fund balance is $210,557.65.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for, for? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item number nine, Courts, consider approval of a contract with HDS Center for Hearing and Deaf Services for July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Rates are attached.
Good.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval for Todd Brothers to work as an independent contractor for the booking center at a rate of $15 an hour through December 31, 2014, effective June 1, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of contract with Neo Post for three years for postage equipment in the MDJ offices. Last contract expired on June 30, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under the Election Bureau, consider approval for attendance for Election Bureau Director to the 2014 PA County Election Officers Conference to be held in Erie PA August 18 through August 21. Cost of lodging for three nights will be $507.21. The cost of the registration fee will be $225. Total budget cost of $732.21.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item number 11, Fayette County Office of Human and Community Services, consider approval to advertise the disposal of the following buses as listed.
No.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approval to advertise the IHB for acquisition installation of metal, of metal storage garage.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item number 12, Human Resources, under the Bridge Department, consider approving the amendment to the May 2014 resolution to update the hire date of Bridge Worker One, Michael Modus Law, from June 16, 2014 to June 9, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under CYS, consider ratifying the resignation of Case Worker One, Jenna Adamovich, effective July 11, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approving the pre-hire within one year of Brittany Liptak as Case Worker Two at SEIU CYS rate $16.68 an hour effective July 16, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approving the amendment to the May 2014 resolution to update the hire date of the caseworker supervisor, Nicole Robinson, from May 27, 2014 to May 19, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under the Emergency Management Agency, consider approving the promotion of three following 911 dispatcher trainees, Jennifer Harvey, Erica Glover, and Clinton Regan to full-time 911 dispatchers at SEIU. 911, scope A grade nine, step A, 1279 per hour, effective retroactive to June 18, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approving the promotion of 911 dispatcher trainee Elizabeth Dioria to part-time 911 dispatcher at 1279 per hour, effective retroactive to June 18, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider ratifying the resignation of 911 dispatcher trainee Claudia Jordan, effective July 2, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under Human Services, consider approving the agreement with Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage from January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approving an extension of the independent insurance consultant service of Gary Sevchak and Associates with an increase in the EPM fee of 50 cents per year through December 31, 2014. I believe that should, should be 20, or 50 cents per employee per year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Move.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider accepting the resignation due to retirement of HR Benefits and Programs Coordinator Candy Boyle, effective September 2, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under Information Technology, consider approving the 150-hour volunteer internship of LBI Network Administrator and Security Major Michael Bartow, effective September 8, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Under Tax Assessment, consider approving the promotion, a bid of tax assessment mapping technician Christie Guest to UPI technician at SEIU, pay grade 10, step F, 1438 per hour, effective July 28, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Consider approving the promotion bid of Sam Murphy from Buildings and Browns Maintenance Worker Three to Assessor One at SEIU, pay grade 11, step C, 1378 per hour, effective July 16, 2014.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
When I came in this morning, there was a SEIU local 668 grievance form that was placed under my door. Did any, did any other Commissioner receive this?
I did, yes.
Now, according to this, a grievance is being filed, and it was, it's dated today, Saturday the 15th. It's dated today, sent to Dominic from the two stewards. And they grieve a violation of Article 9, Section 2 and Section 3A. And their brief statement says assessor's position was not posted, and an outside applicant was hired to fill the position. I guess that's for the next item, because Ernest Walters is not a union hire. And then it says remedy requested for the position to be posted within the bargaining unit to allow the opportunity for union employees to bid on the position. From what I understand, I believe both of these items, the one that is on the floor now to vote, there's a motion in a second, not only this one, but also the next one should be tabled pending this grievance form, pending the grievance, or at least, Lisa?
Yes.
Quick question for, Lisa Harkins, you're in for Dominic.
Correct.
Okay. Question for you, if you know the answer, I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but what is the timeframe for a grievance to be scheduled and heard on, on an item such as this? Do you know?
I don't, I have the contract here, but it's usually, usually have to respond within five days.
Okay, now, I, just to give me an, if you want to vote on it, vote hard.
No, no, I was going to reject some comment.
Yeah, just, if you don't know, that's fine, but the point is, is whether, it's not going to be done today, arguably. Okay, now, from, when I received this, this morning, I, I asked a couple of questions about this, and from what I understand is that there was a posting made. However, when the posting was made, it did not indicate the number of open positions. Where if, had it said there are two positions open, which there are, then more than one employee from SEIU could have and may have applied. There, one, one statement made was, well, since a position was posted, it didn't say how, how many positions were vacant, but if five people wanted to apply, then five people could have applied and two positions were being filled. The problem with this is, and we're not going to be able to resolve it today because it's going to be a he said, she said, until we meet with the parties involved. But from what I understand, there are, were other members of the SEIU who would have applied and actually asked a question, how many positions are open? And it was replied, one, and only one person, a union member, meaning Sam Murphy, applied, and the other union member said, well, then I'm not going to apply, you go ahead, I'll just wait for the next, next position that opens, whether it's in tax assessment or somewhere else. And that's fine, union members do that for each other all the time. Not arguing that point, I'm not saying that Sam Murphy is not qualified, I'm not saying that Ernest Walters is not qualified. What I'm saying is, is that the position, a grievance has been filed, until, and until we know what the position of the union is. Their stance, as I read it in a quick comment, conversation was that it should have been posted and stated that two positions were open, and therefore more individuals within the union would have applied. And you, and if, if you say, well, let's go ahead and put Sam and approve that, then here's what the problem's going to be. We tabled this, we have two positions open, we have three people from the union, Sam and two others, apply. We don't know which one of those three will receive it, and it would not be fair to the other two, if there are two, we don't know, it could be more, to, to be interviewed. So I would suggest, I know there's a motion in, in a second, but I would suggest that that be withdrawn. Simone? He made the motion, so I'll just, so here's what I have to say. I would suggest that we, the motion be rescinded and both of these items be tabled. And you said you believe, and I know I'm not holding to it, possibly within five days?
Yes.
Okay. Again, it's, again, I'm not going to argue the point here, but if you have three individuals, union members, and I understand that if there was at least two, they might change their mind, but if there were three, then you don't know who is the most qualified until you give all parties an opportunity to be interviewed. And again, this is nothing against the individuals named on the agenda. And this is last minute, only because this was received in the Commissioner's office, it's time stamped today at 8:39.
Did you speak with Marjorie, Commissioner? I spoke with Dominic as well this morning, so. Dominic contends that he did advertise, the position was posted. He's on vacation now, so I did interrupt him at, at. I'm just telling you what Dominic said, Commissioner, I'm not trying to engage in any formal debate here, I'm just saying, as you said, it's a he said, she said, that's all I'm trying to imply.
Because the union is not arguing that the position was not posted, okay? The union is saying that the position was posted, it did not say that there were more than one position available.
Is that on the grievance? I didn't see, I'm just trying to check the grievance.
Yeah, so the assessor position.
I mean, assessor's position was not posted, and an outside applicant was hired for the, okay, it doesn't say anything about plural here, who did you speak with, with the union that?
Dennis, the other person.
Oh, Dennis, okay, I don't know. Again, yeah, but he said, she said. Lisa, Dominic has contended that he has filed this properly.
He has posted both positions.
That's what he told me, he said, he said he did it.
And.
I, I talked to Christie Spiker at the HR office before the meeting, and her and Marjorie, and that's how Marjorie found out about this, was she was engaging Christie, and there might have been some miscommunication between those two this morning, which precipitated this.
And Dennis, Dennis stated that someone spoke with Christie?
That's correct.
At the HR, and then Christie informed him that if, that a position was posted. At the HR, and then Christie informed him that if, that a position was posted, but it did not indicate the number of positions, nor there was only one position posted, not two.
Well, Christie, I talked to Christie, and she said there was definitely a miscommunication between her and the union steward.
So regardless, since nobody knows, we should, we should table it, because if we have three, and it's not going to hurt to table, table the item, I've said what I've said. You want to weigh in on this, John? It's up to you.
Well, I think it would do less harm if you tabled it. Your potential for, for a problem would go down. You can always ratify next, next meeting.
That's fine with me, just let the motion die by lack of second, I just want to make sure. Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, I agree that the, well, first of all, the, the grievance is clear, doesn't, doesn't state anything about one or two positions available, it just said it was not posted properly.
Yeah, and as John said, we can always ratify and come back and approve, but I just want to make sure it's out in the open that, you know, this was received. There's nothing here that says specifically it was failure to put position or positions, and we're getting that based on hearsay as well. I spoke with the HR director, he explains he did post it. I spoke with the HR staff person there, they said there may have been some miscommunication between them and the union steward, but I will, you know, accept the motion table, if this fails, I'll, I'll table.
I'm not holding on hearsay, I'm, I'm merely going on, and I'm not going to get into who said, here's the grievance, okay? All three of us got it this morning, there's a motion and a second made by them. I suggest that it be withdrawn and it be tabled. They may, I mean, I asked for your opinion, if I wouldn't have, I don't know what they would have done, because there was a motion and a second.
Grievances are a part of the employment process, correct?
Correct.
You receive grievances, they could vary from the scope of it, be it in a hire or the lavatories are too far away, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we understand what a grievance is.
Mm-hmm.
It's not necessarily the right thing, it's just the position of the union of this.
Well, of course, and you, and, and how can a, a voting commissioner make a determination until they hear both sides?
Because I spoke with the HR director, who was the one handling the hire, not the guy that got the information based on a conversation that another union steward had with the, with the HR staff person, who was not even involved with the hiring practice.
Understood.
So that's, that's one basis, it's called credibility throughout the chain, that's the thing I'm saying, Commissioner.
Understood. However, when a grievance is filed, you must, according to the CVA, go through the, the appropriate.
And we will do that.
Go through the appropriate process, and the appropriate process is to hear it, not for us to call Dominic, find out from Marjorie, call this person, call this person.
Well, if you, if you're going to give, if everything's going to stop based on a grievance being filed, you're going to be hell bent on getting anything done.
Then, then vote.
I mean, for God's sakes, there were grievances on everything.
There was a motion and a second, if you disagree.
Oh, now we're getting on the side of caution.
If there was, there was a motion and a second, and if you want to vote on it, go ahead.
I have no problems with you guys killing my motion, I just, it's there, that's all I'm telling you.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
Well, the, you know, the grievance, the grievance did not clearly state, the grievle, the grievance actually said that there wasn't an advertisement. Is that correct?
It doesn't say anything about plural.
It says the position.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything to failure to put, instead of the word position, to put positions in parentheses, it doesn't mention it, and that's semantics, to be quite honest with you.
They could have become vacant at different times, you know, but Dominic has verified that he's posted the positions.
Well, I find it highly improbable that you're going to sacrifice a vertical career move to allow for somebody else to accept that move, and then, well, I'll wait for later for it to come around a second time. That just, that's not the way, hopefully people don't appro, approach their business background like that.
Settle the grievance first.
Absolutely, that's the way it's done.
Let me ask a question, who has the agenda, who has the agenda from last Tuesday?
I do.
The grievance always comes first.
Well, the timing of the grievance is pretty good, too, so that's why.
They said they just found out about it.
Because she was talking to Christie, that's what I tried to explain to you earlier.
Again, I'm not doing a hearsay.
You know, you might, you might be getting to that point.
Um, can I, does anybody want this? I want the HR one.
I don't understand why those union representatives.
I don't know, I spoke, I spoke with her on the phone this morning, too, and she was explaining that was information she had gotten from Christie. There was some confusion about an interview date on five June. This goes back over, over twenty days plus, so it wasn't a secret that the position was open.
No, the, the, what was not, what, the unknown is that two positions, that's the unknown. And if you read the grievance, I am not talking about who said what, I'm looking, I'm looking solely at this document, and this document is referring to having an outside applicant being hired, not, which is, everybody can read it for themselves, I'm not going in at all.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here. If the motion wants to die, let it die, and we'll, we'll wait till next month.
Motion can't die, there's a motion and a second.
Well, then bring it up to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Lisa, please, when Dominic gets back on vacation, once he's scheduled a return.
He should be back on Monday.
Okay, I'd like to sit down with you and John and, please.
Absolutely.
My nay, my nay vote is, my nay vote is because of the grievance, please make sure that that's in the minutes.
Okay, the next item is consider approving the hire of Ernest Walters as Assessor One at SEIU pay grade step eleven, pay grade eleven, step A, thirteen oh eight per hour, effective July sixteenth, twenty fourteen. I'll second that. All those in favor, aye, motion carries.
I think the, the commissioner should have relied, again, on the advice of the solicitor in this one here, regardless of whether or not you ratified, the issue before us is, if it, if it, if after the grievance has been heard, and it has shown that the second position was not posted, or that the union had no knowledge that there were two positions open, you may have had three individuals, and there's two positions, and, and that would have, may have removed the outside individual, because if, if the one of the three would have met the minimum qualifications, then that person would have been permitted to bid on the position. And for the current, Mr. Murphy, again, he, he is qualified for this job, I'm not saying that he is not, but if there were two other individuals, they may have been more qualified, and you don't know them without first doing the interview process.
And I'll just comment, I, I don't know if they've been interviewed. You know, it's going to be, depend on the posting dates and who they interviewed.
For something that was slipped under the door, I mean, I made phone calls, you spoke with Dennis?
What do you mean slipped under the door? Where did you get that?
No, I got this under my box, yours was under your door.
Yeah.
I mean, did you, where's Dennis? Is Dennis here today? Dennis Hall, is he, is he, did he show up to the meeting?
Up for what meeting?
Well, I mean, I would think that a union representative would be here if they felt the need to address the complaint.
Ask Dennis or Marjorie.
Yeah, I intend to, but I'm not going to let a grievance slow down the, the wheels that we need to keep moving. And we just got talking about that they have a project that's going to require extensive work, is that correct? The GIS mapping, and we're going to slow them down by not having staff there for the next thirty days? I don't think so.
Under tax claim, consider ratifying the resignation of Account Clerk Three, Matthew P. Layman, effective July third, twenty fourteen.
Move.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Consider approving the promotion bid of Marjorie, please, could we have, could we have some quiet in the audience, please? Consider approving the promotion bid of Marjorie Stefani from Accounts Clerk One to Accounts Clerk Three at SEIU pay grade seven, step A, eleven forty per hour, effective retroactive to July seventh, twenty fourteen.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Consider approving the lateral transfer with no change in pay rate at SEIU pay grade three, ten dollars per hour, of Raylene Furlan from Veterans Affairs, Veteran Service Clerk to Account Clerk One, effective July sixteenth, twenty fourteen.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Under prison, consider approving the two-hundred-and-forty-hour volunteer internship of Cal U Psychology Forensic Scientist, Science, Justice Studies major, Haley Moroga, effective July, or August twenty eighth, twenty fourteen.
Move.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Under planning and zoning, consider RZ fourteen-dash-two William E. and Karen Moser, Smithville, Burb, requesting an extension to R two, high-density residential zone on property currently zoned B one general business.
Make a motion to approve the request for an extension by William and Karen Moser, from currently zoned B one general business, to R two, high-density residential zone.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Fourteen public works, consider approval for Jill Myers to attend New World Systems, twenty fourteen Training Public Administration Executive Conference, October fifty-seven, Boca Don, Florida. Estimated costs are two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Move.
Second, all those in favor, aye, motion carries. Consider approval for Director Bob Carson to attend the Prop Recycling and Organics Conference, twenty fourteen, it is being held at the Doubletree Pittsburgh Meadowlands in Washington, PA, July twenty-third through twenty-fifth. The cost of the three-day conference is five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Move.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Consider approval to enter into a lease extension agreement with Columbia Gas of PA for twenty years for a regulatory site in German Township, reg, a regulator site in German Township. Solicitor, you reviewed that contract?
Yeah, and we were supposed to get some more information.
Well, I, what I have is, and if this would be allowable, it was a hundred dollars in nineteen fifty-four?
Yeah.
Okay, based on just the value of a dollar, if you received a dollar in nineteen fifty-four, and you got that same dollar today, how much would it be worth? It was eight point, eight dollars and seventy cents, so that would equate to eight, eight hundred and seventy dollars, if you're looking at the value of a dollar.
Yeah. And my position, when we discussed it before, was that we should be getting more money.
And that's my position as well. So, I mean, at the minimum, we should be getting at least eight hundred and seventy dollars.
I, I think this matter would be best discussed at the, at the next, next board meeting, and maybe we can get more money out of it.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's just out of the principle of the thing, I mean, there, it's, you know, I don't.
This was, this was discussed and on the agenda last month. The individual from Columbia Gas was, was here at that time. She's here now, at the direction of last month's meeting, and, and the individual had stated that they were open to have a discussion on the increase in price. And the direction was for the solicitor and department head to meet with and discuss with the representative from Columbia Gas and bring back that information. That was thirty days ago, and now we're, now it's another, let's table it. Ma'am, here's the individual, right? I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
I'm Hannah Stackman White.
Okay, did anyone, did, everything that I just said, is that not accurate to your knowledge?
It did.
Yes, okay. Did anyone contact you since last month's meeting?
I, I attempted to contact Mr. Carson several times, but he told me to contact him after the last meeting last month, and I asked if there had been a decision. You have to understand our position, we can't negotiate your position from our side. We have to approve a request, so a request for an additional amount would have to be made, but honestly, we, in pursuit of this action, it's nay.
Right.
Found out there was an increased request by the county.
Right, and at the last month's meeting, that's what we directed the, the department head to do, to meet with us, and then to propose something. Once we meet, then we could propose something to you. You made it very clear that it was, the ball was in the county's side here to make a proposal, and then you would take it to your people.
Correct.
And your, and you activated meeting, Mr. Carson said that he would be in touch with you, is that what you just said?
Correct. I attempted to contact Amy, I was unsuccessful, so I contacted Amy, and she suggested that if there was a contract prepared for the lease extension that just had length in the amount, that possibly at the nay's meeting, a dollar figure could be agreed upon, and we could handwrite it in there so that it can be moved forward. Mr. Todd, he, you know, assessment is, that's generally how rate increases are handled by counties and governments, based on, you know, the current dollar figure. The engineering supervisor approved an allowance of up to a thousand dollars because they thought it would come in at precisely, you know, an estimated around that amount. If that is agreeable to you, like I said, I, I have the same lease extension agreement, just, you know, minus the dollar figure, I can enter that amount in there if it can be approved.
Okay, now, Amy didn't come through. Do you have that information or not? Did I hear, hear you just say you don't have that?
He asked if I had the agreement itself. I don't have the agreement itself. Which information did you have?
I have, I mean, you have the agreement, the agreement in and of itself will be the same online, which is the same, which is.
You gave us that agreement more than thirty days ago, I know, I read it.
Right, it's the latest dollar figure.
Right.
So, solicitor, assuming that the language portion of this agreement is, is acceptable?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead.
Vince said that, that it was, that eight hundred dollars would be a, eight hundred and eighty dollars would be a, a consumer price index-generated increase from a hundred to eight hundred. That, that suggested that they have authority for a thousand. It would seem to me that a thousand would be a good number today. The only problem I have with a thousand, and this is a, a, something that you have to consider, is that it's a twenty year.
Right, right, so even if you say a thousand, the number is a thousand for the next twenty years, then you still have that computation to do. So that's why it should have been a, a, an amount that could be, you know, perhaps.
Adjusted.
Adjusted, you know, from years, um, like fifty-four, opt to five years, between the five and ten year, and the ten to twenty year. And, and that's, that's something that could have been also suggested, and Columbia Gas would have considered.
You can, you can adjust anything, I mean, generally, lease extension agreements have a particular period of time, and for particular rates being paid on there. Like I said, this is a very small area, that were, it was like, you know, a twenty by twenty area, and in a location that's not really useful for other purposes. This regulator is strictly for the purpose of making sure that the residents and buildings in that area receives sufficient amount of gas at peak times during the winter.
I'm, I'm going to ask a question, whoever can do this mathematical computation, please do it. If we had, and this is something, if we inserted in the agreement today, you would then take it back to your people, okay? So if you started out with eight hundred dollars, now, John, again, if we do this in increments, so perhaps years, one through five, at eight hundred, and then five through ten, and then ten through fifteen, and fifteen through twenty, okay? Now, what would be, doing that calculation that Vince said he did with this consumer price index, what would years five through ten be?
That's one of the problems, that they don't, you'd have to go based on the CPI, I would think, which would, you'd base the increase on the CPI, which could be one point nine to two point one percent every year, if you wanted to go that route.
Yeah, and it, that's not a viable projection. I don't, I don't think you could come up with an accurate way of doing that unless you use this consumer price index or some other index.
You have a, a background in accounting, very high of a background in accounting, so how would, how could you calculate that? Could you do the eight hundred and years five? I mean, could you do the eight hundred and years five through 10 at fifty, 10 through 15, nine hundred and 15 through 20,000?
The answer to your question is that you still have to divide it to an index. I've done accounting long enough to know that we've had years in which our consumer price index went up 16 percent.
You don't have to put it through an index, it's, we can make.
You can do it a percentage, it's just a percentage.
And they just left on saying that they would, they would take it back and consider it.
Alternatively, you could go for the lease extension to be less years.
Okay, and then renew it at that time.
Oh, every five years would be good.
That way, that would give you a fixed dollar amount that you feel comfortable with for the next five years and if we represent the lease.
Then why don't we make, why don't we change this to a five-year agreement?
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to, make a motion for the counting to offer to extend the lease agreement with Columbia Gas for the regulator, regulator, regulator site in German Township for a five-year period at eight hundred dollars a year. That's the, that's what he said, right? Seventy, no?
Eight seventy.
Eight seven, eight hundred and seventy dollars per year. Ma'am, could you please tell me what the, when does this lease expire? When does the current lease expire? Because I want to have an end date. I don't want, I don't want to say for five years, I want to put a date specific.
Right.
And then also, I recall asking if we could have, just to say this site in German Township doesn't mean anything German Township.
I, I have the block lot, the parcel number.
That's what I would, yeah, can I have a parcel number? Yes, please.
Fifteen dash thirty-five dash zero two six six.
Zero two six six?
Correct.
Okay, and could you tell me when the lease expires, the current lease?
November 14th.
This year?
Correct.
That would take us up to November 13th of 2018? Nineteen, nineteen, right? Ma'am, fifteen dash thirty-five dash zero two six six?
Correct.
And a five-year lease would take us, take the county through November 13th?
2018.
2018?
Mm-hmm.
No, 19.
2019.
Right?
Right. So you're going to get from November 14th, 2014, to November 13th, 2019.
Which is a five-year lease?
Correct.
Okay.
For eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Per year.
Payable annually.
Okay. And so that we have no problems also with, let's put a date in there. When you say payable annually, you want to have it on the anniversary date, November 14th?
Sure.
Payable, November 14th annually, okay?
Sure.
In advance. At the beginning of your.
Yes.
That's not.
You mean payable annually.
In advance. So you say payable each November 14th annually in advance, okay? I am going to make a motion to, for the county to offer a lease extension, a lease agreement extension with Columbia Gas of Pennsylvania for its regulator site in German Township known as parcel number fifteen thirty-five oh two six six, beginning November 14th, 2014, and ending November 13th, 2019, which is a five-year lease, payable per year at eight hundred and seventy dollars on the anniversary date being November 14th in advance.
Second. I would, just some comments here. I would agree with the, with the timeline. There's two, two reasons why I'm not agreeing to the, to the cost because one is the gas company already indicated this, as John reiterated, that the, they are acceptable to a thousand dollars a year and since it is a five-year contract, the difference between eight seventy and a thousand would help offset the CPI index for the remaining four years of that contract.
Ma'am, did you say that they would be acceptable to a thousand or did I?
Or a 20-year lease.
Yeah, or did I, right, or did I hear you say up to a thousand and that's based on a 20-year lease?
Correct.
Okay. I, you know, to move this along, I'm going to, I'm going to say a thousand dollars and you can come back and say no, okay? Okay? My motion stands with, and just change it from eight seventy to a thousand.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15, under tax claim, consider approval of a motion to accept the following bids from July 1st, 2014 Repository Cell Bid Opening, subject to all conditions being met as listed.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16, under Veterans Affairs, consider approval for Donna Niclow and Glenn Syper to attend the annual continuing education conference in Mechanicsburg, PA, presented at the Office of Deputy Adjutant General of Veterans Affairs the week of September 16th through September 19th, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, under Commissioners, consider executing an agreement and memorandum of understanding between the County of Fayette and Goodwill Industries for recycling services.
Act Ashley.
As, should be as attached.
Act, they say, consider executing recycling service agreement and then between the County of Fayette and Goodwill Industries. That's the name of the agreement, the French term.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the May 22nd, 2014 Regular Annual Meeting Minutes.
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider placing on the, consider a motion to approve the following transfers as listed for a total debit of $42,000 minus $72, minus six cents and total credit is the same.
Move.
We need to ratify. I'll second if you say, if you say you'd ratify.
I'm moving.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Are there any, before we get to public comments, are there any announcements? Are there any public comments?
Yes. Michael Cavanaugh for the record. With regard to the issues with the HR today, I sense Mr. Zabatowsky, your frustration, I think that you might want to take a look at controlling our own destiny here as far as human resources is concerned. I've attended multiple meetings in the last several months and it seems to be, even at the agenda meetings, the HR stuff is never there, it's always late, it's always being attached. You may want to make a change there. It might be necessary for that. My other issue is under Public Works. The director's not available, is he? He's not here?
He's, he's in the office, from what I understand.
He's not here, though. At the agenda meeting, I discussed and showed you some photographs about Jacobs Creek with the, with the problems with the pavilions you could drop the five-gallon buckets into, the bathrooms would not be unusable. In addition to that, the, the lake being very, very low. Has anybody had any discussion with him? Has he had any?
I spoke with him about it, I haven't gotten anything back from him. And I also spoke with him about the memorial, the World War Memorial up at the courthouse too.
Okay. So hopefully by the next meeting it'll be.
I hope they have something for you before that.
Okay, and then the only other thing I had was any idea of posting the agendas online yet? Because we had discussed that a couple of times at several different meetings to see if you were going to start posting this so the citizens could see them online.
Yes, I, I.
It was online.
It was online.
It's posted online on the website, you can get to it? Okay, so this agenda was placed? Okay, that's good. I didn't, I didn't have time to check, I just wanted to confirm that. Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes?
Have you gotten a GI report on that swamp land yet?
If you're speaking of the.
Where are you going to put the prison?
Report, I have, again, I have not personally received it. We have, it is, the engineering firm has received it and the resolution based on the soil conditions have been accounted for and designed into the foundation system.
Will we be able to see the report? You said you.
Yes, we will, we'll get it to you. I'm sure that your engineering expertise will be very valuable.
Don't be smart mouth, Al.
I'm going to make this.
Are there any other, are there any other public comments? I don't know if you have an engineering firm that was going to review this.
That may be due since you were a smart mouth, that's what you were.
Yeah, that was our call for.
If we, any other public comment?
Do we have any other public comment?
Excuse me. Thank you.
You should respect your elders.
The prison need study was linked on the homepage of the website, county website. I will make any suggestion that the chairman contact the engineering firm today, Rob Slater, get the document in electronic format, P or PDF, and have that linked to our county website, which is the homepage on our county website. And that can be done in a matter of a few clicks as far as our IT department is concerned. If the document is in paper form or electronic form, it can be easily converted to a PDF form by our IT department and then placed on the county website in a matter of a few clicks. So I will suggest to the county chair to call Rob Slater and have that, first off, and I would like to have a copy because the chair just said he does not have a copy, though it is a county document, so someone here in the county should have it. Have Mr. Slater, please email it to me and also the format to our IT department and within a day or so, it should be able to be placed on the website.
I don't think they want the public to see it.
Well, that's.
They're hiding it from the public.
That's my suggestion. We did the prison, yeah, the prison need study was done that way. We can do that for the Geo study since everyone seems to obviously want to read it.
I'm pretty sure that what we can do, that the engineering firm can all, can convert it to PDF themselves and forward it to us, so it will be taken care of. Are there any other public comments?
Just to follow up to that, Mrs. Madsen doesn't need anybody to defend her, but I thought that was a very rude and ignorant comment you just made to her. Anytime somebody questions the prison, Mr. Ambrosini, you continuously.
No, I don't.
Get arrogant.
No, I don't.
And that was, that was, that was an unnecessary comment and I don't, I don't, I don't think the public appreciates the way you treat them.
Are there any other?
And hopefully they'll treat you the right way next election.
Amen.
Well, you can just show him what he thinks of the scene then.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, we'll say goodbye next week, please.